I loved it.
Oh, like a law?
They did a new system and they don't have it anymore, but I loved it.
Good evening and welcome to the October 16th, 2024 Yarmouth Planning Board Meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, Chair. This is to formally advise that as required by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A's, Paragraphs 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, signed into law on June 16th, 2021. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on October 16th, 2024, at 5:30 PM. The public is welcome to attend in person this evening or via alternative public access provided on the notice of meeting available on the Town of Yarmouth website. I'd like to begin by taking roll call. Susan Britta.
Here.
Will Rubenstein.
Here.
Jim Saban.
Present.
Peter Slovac.
Here.
Ken Smith. Joanne Crowley, present. Seeing that we have a quorum, I'd like to now call the meeting to order and ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
[inaudible]
First item on our agenda this evening is a continuation of our deliberations with regard to the two zoning amendments that we are proposing for special town meeting. Zoning Article One, amend zoning bylaws, Section 412, affordable housing, to revise the methodology used to determine the amount of the fee to be paid in lieu of creating affordable housing units. I'd like Kathy Williams, our town planner, to walk through some, a minor change that we've made adjustments based on our discussions last week. There were some questions raised and I think we've answered them. You and Mary Wagon have met.
Yes, correct. And Mary's, there she is.
Welcome, Mary.
At the open house, at the public hearing, there was no comments from the public or written comments, but the board did want some clarifications on when the actual cash payment amount would be set annually. Mary and I talked and we basically settled on it would make sense to do it on July 1st of each year and we would use the current Warren Group data and also the affordable price would then be requested to be calculated by that housing and livable communities and it would still remain fixed for the following 12-month period. And then, so there's the change there and then it's minor changes to the explanation to correlate with that change.
Any discussion? Board members, any concerns, Mr. Saban?
Not a concern, but I think that, I was trying to think how town meeting's going to go. The question is going to become, who is the housing and livable communities and who appoints those people? Are they, is that a state-led agency? Is it a town agency?
Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. It used to be CH, what is it? HD, what was it, what was it before, Mary?
DHCD. It's now the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. It's a cabinet-level office now at the state level. And the reason why I suggest that office to do that is they run the local initiative program which sets our resale prices for any affordable home in town. So they do that for us already. So it makes sense that they're the ones that would set the theoretical price for a resale unit or an affordable home being sold connected with our cash payment in lieu.
Super. I appreciate that. I expect that somebody might ask that at town meeting, so.
Can I make a suggestion?
I appreciate it.
Whoever's going to handle this, who handles this on the floor that night?
We haven't, we haven't decided on that yet.
Maybe in the narrative, they could have one line in there, as Kathy just said, or as Mary said, explaining just HLC is a state-level cabinet that does this for us. And that way, it would be in the record.
In the explanation?
Yeah.
Always trying to, you know, think, but you know, when it comes to town meeting, who knows what somebody's going to come up and ask.
Madam Chair, can I ask, it's just a timing question?
Please.
Assuming this passes at town meeting, I can't remember how long it takes for our zoning.
It's 30 days to submit it to the Attorney General and then 90 days for them to respond to it.
So 120 days?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that shouldn't matter, given what the date is on the setting the rates. It only matters in terms of development.
Right. Will this be effective?
The date would be set on July 1st, 2025.
Right, the first time.
I meant the date of the effectiveness of this change versus anything else. So it's going to be four months, anyway.
Should it be approved at special town meeting, then in July, that this would actually go in, technically would go into effect before that, but would be actually used the first time in July?
So anybody that comes before us before then would use the old method?
I think that makes sense, Mary.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Give the two thumbs up.
Just wanted to talk that out for a sec. Thank you.
Any other questions with regard to this? We have one outstanding item on this and that's who will present it. And in our meeting minutes from last week, in my recollection, is that we thought one of, two of our real estate professionals might want to present this, Mr. Saban or Mr. Slovac. So Susan has already agreed to present the next, the seasonal housing. So if you're intending to attend town meeting, if you can, Peter or Jim?
I would, I would pass to Jim on that.
Mr. Saban has vice chair.
Should have spoke first.
I defer. I think it's already mentioned.
Spoke first and said, I defer to you, then now I'm wondering, where's Ken on this?
If you need a motel developer, it's easy to get two fast ones.
Yep. Jim, Susan said she'll do it. She'll do both of them. It's up to you guys. Are you attending, Jim? Are you going to be there?
I'm intending on attending.
Oh, okay. Well, whatever. If you want to do it, you can, otherwise I'll do it.
There we go. Susan, I'll give you the full support right behind you. I'll cheer all along.
That's all I need.
That's all I need. Thank you, Susan. I appreciate that.
Moved enough articles lately.
So that takes care.
October, November? When is the meeting? The 16th of November?
No, the 19th.
19th. I always get that confused.
Are you going to vote to recommend now or later?
Well, I wanted to, we've just covered zoning Article One and kind of slipped into zoning Article Two for a second. So I'd like to ask that may I have a motion to recommend zoning Article One, amend zoning bylaw, Section 412, affordable housing?
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Zoning Article Number Two is to amend Section 404.5, seasonal employee housing at motels, hotels, to limit the number of rooms that can be utilized for seasonal employee housing at hotel motels to a maximum of 15% in the hotel motel overlay District Two, HMOD Two, zoning district along South Shore Drive, and amend Section 500 definitions to clarify the definition for transients at motels or hotels at extended stay hotels. This has not changed, Kathy, as I understand it from last, our last meeting. And Mr. Slovac, you weren't here for that. Any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay. So may I have a mo, Mr. Saban?
Actually, I do have a question. I kind of deferred to my comments on this originally because I wanted to get up to speed on it a little bit. So under 404.5.2, special permit or variance relief, no special permit or variance relief. So I'm wondering what the reasoning and thought process behind restricting variances, considering a variance is for hardship. So why are we eliminating variances from this process? Is there, do we know that?
I believe that in our discussions and prior meetings, we do not want to leave open an option under any circumstances for more than 50%, 15%. We want to close the door on any opportunity, any route, if you will, to appeal or to look for more than 15%. That's my recollection. Other board members? I thought, Susan, you're.
I think certainly when the, we had the community testify, the overall issue was abuse and I think what they were looking for was the most restricted, easy-to-understand change so that we would eliminate virtually any possibility of abuse. And that, although it's a decent concept, but then the question is what constitutes hardship and that opens a whole realm of routes that we did not want to go down and certainly the neighborhood did not want to have considered.
And as a former member of the zoning board of appeals.
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah, certainly it would be kicked to the zoning board of appeals. They would be the ones to determine hardship, as traditionally they have.
Yeah. And that, we thought that was.
That's their job.
Yeah, we thought that was unnecessary because the planning board was asked to look at this and solve the, you know, don't just lessen it, but solve it. And I think that's what the language, that's why we made it as restrictive as possible.
I've heard no objections to the article. Just, that was my own personal kind of, why no variance?
I'd like to tie, can I tie in something that you just said? I watched the select board meeting from two weeks ago and I think Mr. Forrest immediately thought that we were trying to, you know, hurt business owners from being able to house their employees. So it's not his fault that he hadn't taken a deep dive into it, which I guess he will do, Madam Chair, when you go before him. But I think when he understands that we're restricting this to the, to the HMOD Two only, I think he may feel differently. But also, in the explanation, just to piggyback on what Jim said, in the explanation paragraph of the article, it says, this article, near the end, this article would prevent HMOD Two properties, dot, 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 but retains their right to seek relief, oh, from other provisions. Okay. So it still does allow some business owners in that to go before the zoning board, but just not for the 15% cap.
Correct. That's correct.
So I think that's, again, as Jim was saying in the first article, Madam Chair, to anticipate not so much a town meeting, but at the meeting with the select board, that may be something they come out of the traps with about us trying to, you know, hurt employers. And as someone who does have seasonal employees, I can tell you that is the last thing we're trying to do. It's very specific and very limited. And I think hopefully Mr. Forrest, and I assume he will, go through the packet and the materials and see that's what we're trying to do. So I'm just trying to throw a couple things together there.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And no one spoke against it. I mean, even the chamber.
Of course.
I don't think they even sent anything in. So I think people were aware of the abuse, what had gone on, and the aim was to correct the abuse. And I didn't, I don't think we had anyone testify against it, did we? I don't think so.
The one thing, Mary Vilbon did talk to me and wanted to know who, which of the hotels in the HMOD Two were using this at all now? The only one that's using it is the Village Green and they're using it for the less than 15%. None of the other hotels are using any of their rooms.
And that may be the single sentence you have to say to Mr. Forrest so that he can understand that we're not trying to do what he thinks we're trying to do.
I added some extra stuff into the PowerPoint presentation and I did see that too and I provided.
Thank you.
Mr. Forrest with some additional information.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Kathy did get back directly to Selectman Forrest on this issue.
And quite honest, economically, it's not to their advantage to, if they've got their employees in there, they can't rent that room for $200 a night. So, I mean, it's not to their advantage.
What year is this? 1977, Jim? What is, what's going on?
I don't know which hotel it was.
Jim, have you seen a map of where these properties are? $200.
I have an RV. I don't go to hotels.
You glamp.
Something like that. I'm not in opposition to this, by the way. I just was, you know.
Good clarification. Yep. Any other comments with regard to zoning Article Number Two? Questions or concerns? Okay, may I have a motion to recommend zoning Article Number Two, to amend zoning bylaws, Section 404.5, seasonal employee housing, and Section 500 definitions?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, there was a tie. Jim can have it.
No, you can have this one.
Oh, wow. The spirit of collegiality.
Any further discussion? I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Come to town meeting.
Kathy, we have the memorandum to the town moderator and we'll add Susan Britta to that as the, thank you for coming, Donna. Appreciate it. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Now, we can go to the Selectman's meeting also.
Oh, of course, of course.
Yeah.
We would like you to, you know, if you, if you, if you would, speak up.
Oh, I will.
If they allow it.
Great.
Madam Chair, if I can, the, in our packet, one of the, part of the presentation is the overview map that shows the HMOD Two zoning and which hotels are affected by this. I think that's an important piece of our PowerPoint presentation, so people. Wonderful. Thank you. Nothing else.
Okay. So moving on, next item on our agenda is the Matta Keys Use Committee. At our last meeting, Mr. Saban, you raised the issue that there was no planning board representative on the Matta Keys Use Committee. We had a general discussion on the topic with many of us agreeing with Mr. Saban and we agreed to put this on our agenda this evening. And I, at the time, requested Mr. Saban and Mr. Rubenstein to collaborate on a letter, a memo to the board of select, to the select board. It is in our packets. Kathy included it and I'd like to open up discussion on the draft. I appreciate, again, Will, you and him.
Well, just in the interest of the public record, Madam Chair, should I read the letter? Should we put it on the screen? You know, I don't want to, I don't want to get too into the minutia. Do we need to read it out loud or is that not necessary? It's in the packets. It's on the screen.
I don't think we need to read it.
Okay.
You need to read it out.
Cool. I just wasn't sure.
It's in draft.
What process you wanted it to be.
It'll become public record at some point when it's final.
It's in the packet and it will also be in the select board's packet.
Right. Once we get it to the final form. Madam Chair, I guess I would just say that Mr. Saban and I met last week and we just took the kernels of what we thought the most important points were from our discussion last week and put it into written form. We did flesh out a couple things, specifically posting what the actual charge of the Matta Keys Use Committee is and comparing that and contrasting it to our, you know, lack of appointment. And also, it made me think, because we just had the discussions about all the different committees that the planning board is assigned to, we decided to list them. And I might have missed one or two, so I hope that at some point someone will correct us. And Kathy had one, actually, it wasn't Kathy. I just was thinking out loud to myself, which, you know, is a fun thing to do when you're by yourself, is that some of these committees on here, there's one is, was an ad hoc. So it wasn't that the select board told us to be on the open space and rec plan. Actually, that came from the Conservation Commission. So I might want to change the sentence above that list. But in general, we restated our disappointment in not being appointed to begin with, recapped how much of a role we play, both mostly on the 10,000 to 20,000 to 30,000-foot view of lots of projects in our town through our subcommittee work, and then made a request at the end, a call to action, to have an appointment from this board on the Matta Keys Use Committee. That's essentially what the letter says.
Comments, suggestions? Mr. Slovac, any thoughts?
I will add that the CDC also had two applicants that were not chosen, so. And you read the charge in economic, cultural, tourism, recreation, and would have made sense to have represented from that committee.
Have they had a meeting since, since the committee, this committee was formed? Was there any discussion about?
The same thing. Two members, the two members were not, were.
Disappointed?
Hoping to be chosen, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
But they're not going, they're not necessarily doing what we're thinking about doing.
They're not.
Because we haven't decided to do it yet.
Right. They're not.
That will be an important part of the minute. Thank you, Peter. I appreciate that. Mr. Saban, any, you were part author of this. Any further explanation or?
I think in light of the fact that I just heard that the Economic Development Committee is not included in this, I originally was concerned about the charge that we're bringing forward to them, of asking them to increase the number to nine members and to include one or member of the planning board. But hearing now that the Economic Development Committee is not on this as well, then it makes much more sense to look at the nine and bring them along with us because, I mean, if there are two boards or committees in town that I think that would be instrumental in the redevelopment of our community, it would be those two. And then go from there. I mean, those are like, you know, Mookie Betts and Shohei Ohtani. Those are the first two you start with, you know? Although they haven't helped us up last night, so. I think we're just trying to make it perfectly clear that, you know, we just don't, for the life of us, understand the logic behind not having the town's planning department, committee, board involved in planning. And I think that's kind of the gist of what we're trying to, you know, maybe they can explain it away and maybe they'll do nothing, but I think it deserves an explanation. I think it's a question that, you know, half the community's probably asking. How do those, how do those two not be involved in this crucial redevelopment?
Ms. Britta, okay, a couple of comments. I agree, you know, that maybe economic, but I have to tell you, I'm not prepared to carry their water. If they want to send a letter, let them. We're, I'm only.
No, I'm not suggesting to add their name, but I'm just saying that the number nine now makes more sense because they could then go to them as well.
Yes, that leaves it open for them. The only other thing I would add is maybe a sentence in here that says, you know, given our, given the expertise on the planning board, it is, we believe that the community would have and still will benefit from having a planning board member on this committee. I think that, I think we, I think it would be important to make a link between what we bring, all our expertise, and therefore, because of this expertise, the community would benefit by having a planning board member on this, on this exceedingly important development opportunity.
I agree. I think one, where we tried to get to that is when we put the sentence, and the planning board members are uniquely qualified.
We could add another sentence there.
We can certainly add it there.
And, and the community would benefit from having the expertise of the, of a planning board member on this committee.
Okay.
The community at large, the residents, the town, whatever, however you want to say it.
Well, Kathy's going to make these changes as we go along, so let's agree on what we want that sentence to be. I'm hearing that that sentence would now read, planning board members are uniquely qualified to serve on the MUC and the community would benefit as well.
And say, or.
Benefit by having a planning board member.
Or you say karma, and therefore the community would benefit.
Okay.
From having a planning board member on this committee.
Can I throw the word greatly in there?
No, adjectives.
No. Madam Chair is, Madam Chair has comments about adjectives. We'll get to that.
Can we just say, and the community would benefit from having the expertise of a planning board member?
There you go. Well said.
Oh, there we go, Kathy.
I think I just wrote it down faster than you and whoever said it, I'm just writing down what they said.
But you get, you get this, you get a star. You get a sticker.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you, Kathy.
Transcribe.
And I think in the interest of clarity, and as I mentioned earlier, in the, two more sentences down where it says, on top of that crucial work, I would change it to, on top of that crucial work, planning board members serve on numerous town committees.
And I would say, in addition to that crucial work, instead of on top of.
Okay, cool. In addition. Yeah, on top of is not great.
Crucial work.
Yeah. In addition to that crucial work, planning board members serve on numerous town committees involving community planning, colon, and then it has the list. And that will, that way the ad hoc committee gets swept up in there, which is important, but is not a charge. I guess I would just like to say in general, you know, what is the outcome we're trying to get, right? So that's, that's the reason why we're going through this whole exercise. And the outcome we're trying to get is to get one or more.
Well, first thing, to increase the size of the committee.
Right. So that's why we had to, that's why Jim and I, when Jim and I were writing this, we're like, wait, we can't just say, put a member on, when the charge literally would not allow them to do it.
Increase the size of the committee and.
Right. Has to be an odd number. So we went to nine, seven to nine.
And one of those seats should be appointed, one of the increases, should be an appointee from the planning board committee. And that's what you say.
Right. And the nice, the nice part is, it allows the select board the opportunity to also appoint another person, right? Because right now, there's only seven.
Or they could appoint two people from the planning board.
Right. But I'm not, we're not demanding that, but we're allowed, if they start to.
Yes.
Understand the math of it all, it gives them the chance to find another deserving member.
They could appoint another citizen, they could appoint someone from, from the community economic development, they could appoint anyone in that ninth seat, but of the two extra seats, one should go to planning.
So does the end of this letter make sense to everybody? Or should it be rewarded? I think, I think it's pretty, pretty clear, is that we're asking them to modify the charge to do two things, you know, codify, codify these two things, make it nine and include a planning board member. And then the second, separate thing we're asking for them to do is then appoint somebody from the planning board.
Modify the charge so that.
And again, there might be some English here that we could, you know, improve on, but we just wanted to make sure we're not, we want to make sure we're trying to, we're trying to get the outcome we want.
I would suggest that that last sentence, beginning with therefore, we don't need, in the interests of planning the future for the Town of Yarmouth.
We don't. It's just a little extra sauce, but you're right, Madam Chair, we don't.
I kind of like it, though.
Okay, well.
Because we are trying to build a case that we bring some expertise.
I'm going to guess that Madam Chair says we've already made our point and we don't need to hit it, we don't need to hammer them again.
We really do, but.
Well, if you think.
This is, this is going to be an ask, this is going to, this is a letter to them, that they could just write a letter back to us.
Yeah.
This might never appear on their agenda.
True.
They determine what their agenda is.
So in the interest of.
In case we could, we could ham it up all we want.
One approach.
I, I agree. The most important thing are the two things we're asking for. And they're very direct and they're very clear. And I think limiting language that suggests that they were not looking at the interests of planning the future of the Town of Yarmouth might be controversial, might be insulting.
Therefore, in the, in the.
Just therefore, we ask.
Continued interest. And they continue this, and we'll give them the benefit of the doubt that they started, they were, and we're going to continue it by increasing the board to nine people. Therefore, in the continued interest, in your continuing interest, in order.
Okay, all right.
In your continuing.
Make it nice, okay.
In your continuing interest.
In your continuing interests.
Or in the best interests.
Best interests, or better than you thought.
Do you like it making when we say your? Do you like that better, Madam Chair?
Your.
Because this is going to them, yeah.
Your.
In your, in your continuing.
Therefore.
Yep.
You could say, in your continuing efforts to.
I'm not describing because I've lost where we are.
Okay, so therefore.
Yep.
In your continuing interest.
To plan?
Continue, to plan for the future of the Town of Yarmouth. How about that?
There you go.
Continuing interest to plan for the future of the Town of Yarmouth, we ask that you add the following to your meeting agenda, colon, modify the MCU charge. Modify the MCU charge, I would put a colon there to state, one, increase the MCU committee to a nine-member committee. Two.
What?
Include a planning board member.
I'm following. Susan's saying in one A, change it to, "Increase the muck."
Yeah, use a verb there, increase.
The muck to become a nine member.
To be a nine member, and two, include one planning board appointee.
Right, to put some verbs at the beginning of those, little A, little B.
Ex-words.
Yeah, that's it.
So you want that as one, you don't even want it as an A and a B, it's just modify the.
No, no, I was just saying, put the verbs at the beginning of those, of A and B. Increase and.
Increase and include.
So increase the muck to.
To become.
To.
Become a nine-member committee.
And then include one planning board appointee to the muck.
Yeah, right. And then appoint, including and appoint.
Because then it's consistent, because it says, then we got modify, increase, include, appoint.
Yeah.
Wow, it's a verbapalooza. Did you get any?
Do you have that, Kath? Did you get it okay?
I'm going to do, is I'm going to make the edits that I think I've heard tonight, and I'm going to send it back to Will, and he will let me know. Who do you want me to send it to?
Well, we're going to need to get it to all of us, sign it.
Yeah, we're going to have to come in and physically sign it at the desk.
Right, that's why I, that's why I spaced it out the way I did, so that every one of us can actually sign it with our hand.
Yeah, we need to sign it, assuming that we're all in agreement.
Right, of course, we don't.
I know Ken is, Peter, sign like you are as well, of course, okay.
Yeah, I can edit, send it all out to you guys. You can't deliberate on it anymore, but if there's a grammar error, please let me know.
Madam Chair, would you mind if I just get it back from Kathy, look at it, and send it back, or would you rather it go to you? I don't care.
No, it doesn't need to go to me, but I think we should all see it.
Right, but we can't.
Before we come in and sign it.
But how do we do that without violating any open meeting laws?
Dissemination of information, you just can't, like I say, you can't deliberate on it anymore.
Email it, so I can look at it and then forward it on to everybody.
No.
What I think you should do is I will send it to you, and if you're in concurrence with it, then I will send it to the group.
Oh, I just write, I just write Kathy back.
So this is what's being signed unless there's some major grammar error we both missed.
I just have one etiquette point. Mentioning Jim's name and my name in the body of the letter, especially since we're going to sign it. It says here, "Two planning board members," I would just drop our names.
Yeah, that's true, that makes sense.
I would just, I'd just say, "Two planning board members submitted applications."
Yeah, that's a good point.
Because Jim and I are signing it, so it looks a little self-serving.
That's true. Excellent point.
And I have only one comment.
Severe?
Again, it's just, it's just my bureaucratic background.
Are you using the word "we"?
No, severe.
Where are you reading severe?
The third paragraph.
The third paragraph.
Well, your name was.
It's not, I, I don't think it, it makes a difference, and severe means different things to different people, and it could.
Strike that word?
I just want to strike the word. It's a mistake, we think it's a mistake.
And, and saying it's a mistake is also powerful, Madam Chair.
Say oversight.
Oversight.
Okay, we could say it was an oversight.
Wow, oversight sounds way too nice.
We think, we think what you're.
Even karma.
Yeah.
Okay.
Even karma, thank you, Peter.
Again, we're trying to get an outcome, oversight.
Get more sugar than you do.
Believe it was an oversight, okay, thank you.
Oh, wow, look at that.
You just weren't thinking.
So you're good, Kath, with?
Jim and I will sign by a blood print.
Oh, boy.
What?
Madam Chair, just, this is a quick historical question, and maybe Jim knows too, given both of your combined service records. How, how many times has this kind of situation come up?
Never, I don't know any committee.
Where the, where the planning board has written a letter to the select board asking for something in a very, you know, and again, in the best interests of the future of the town way?
I can't remember any committee that was formed that did not include a basic package from the standing committees at the time. I can't, now, there've been a few.
I'm just asking, Jim's not fine, Jim, Jim usually comes up with these things pretty quickly, so.
The last real big development committee that was established and that had a good cross-section of representation.
But it wasn't from a lot of other committees, though.
Wasn't what?
I don't think it was from a lot of other committees.
No.
If the drive-in commit.
It was on.
CEDC and plant, you were the planning rep.
No, who was that?
No, I wasn't the planning rep.
Who was it? I don't remember. I'm sorry, that project gone on so long and the committee's changed.
I know that you and Karen used to go to all the meetings.
Who?
Steve.
No, he's, he's from CEDC.
That's who I meant. It was the older guy, um, the one who.
That narrows it down, Susan.
I'm insulted.
It was Tom Roach.
Oh, Tom.
Was it Tom Roach?
It was Tom Roach.
Tall and thin?
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
In general, I guess, Madam Chair, what I'm hearing is, this is unique, in every, in the best sense of the word.
In my remembrances of town governance, typically, the planning board has been involved in any planning project that the community, so this, to me, is the first time I've ever heard of a planning project of any sort that the planning board was excluded from.
Besides the mag, you know, we're setting aside the magnitude of the project, which, of course.
Forget the magnitude, just, just the whole general concept of planning, anything in town.
But in terms of planning board writing letter to select board, that also doesn't sound like something that.
It doesn't happen often, but it has happened.
It has, okay, that was my other question.
I mean, the planning board has even objected to ZBA decisions.
Oh, okay, well, yeah.
That have over, you know, gone against what the planning board, so they've had to have hearings for that. I recall, it was the town was putting, they're building a garage at the, what do we call it now? Transfer station?
The dump.
The dump. And they got a special permit that the planning board thought should not have been granted, and we challenged it, and went back to the ZBA. So it happens.
Okay.
I mean, these things happen.
Thank you, I just wanted to put it in a little bit of context because I don't have as much.
And typically, you know, most towns' boards of governance tend to work a little bit more.
Of course, collegially.
Cooperatively and, and.
Well, like, like the letter said, Jim, it's an oversight, and we hope that they correct it.
So I'd like to, I'd like to move on in the interest of time, if that's okay, I think we're, we're good on this. Kathy's going to run through, in our, in our packets was a very extensive summary of several summaries, the open house summary, which includes a summary of the mapping comments to date, most of us were there for that, capital budget committee interview comments, summary of the LCP interview with the school superintendent, which I attended with Kathy, and various, and Will, thank you, excuse me. And so we've got a package of information, kind of bringing us up to date on kind of what we've collected so far, so Kathy, if you wouldn't mind.
Just, just a brief aside, we did attend the seaside festival, we were there from 10 to, to 5, and we did get a lot of interest from people coming over. Obviously, it was a crowd that wasn't always people from the town of Yarmouth, and we would ask that question early on before we went into our spiel. But I think people were really interested, they, they had the infographics board there, a lot of people stopped and just were staring at that from a little afar and gave us a chance to go and approach them and that type of thing. So I think it was very, very successful in getting the word out about the LCP and directing people to the online opportunities for public comment. They, they didn't, BSC group did an excellent job, I think, summarizing the open house, and they kind of went through the different dots and identified the various themes that kind of came out of it, very strong support for the libraries and then continuing on with their services and facility upgrades, obviously enhancing communication, we've all been hearing about that for quite some time, so people are very interested in that, and being sure that we're still providing services, programs, and activities for our aging population. A lot of people interested in continuing studies on Route 28 with regard to future growth, economic development, as well as the aesthetics of what it looks like in those design standards that we have been talking about. Strong support for events, activities, and businesses that engage our young adults and expand the shoulder seasons, I think giving people some reason to be a draw to the town of Yarmouth is good. Obviously, very, very strong support for the Mattaquis Middle School property reuse, that was like the biggest item that got, got the stickers next to them. Increasing, looking at zoning, different zoning initiatives to increase housing growth in various types and various locations. Additional coordination with the Cape Cod Regional Airport, they have a lot of things going on there, and it does impact the town of Yarmouth. Looking at improving our pedestrian and bicycle safety and connectivity throughout the town. One woman was actually there with her bike, and that was her comment at the seaside festival. So we're like, yes, I agree. It certainly came out of the open house as well. Being sure that we're support, protecting our drinking water supply and also our coastal and inland water resources, and then, of course, a very supportive of the future phases of our comprehensive wastewater management plan. They also went through and kind of identified the themes that came up through the online mapping process, and some of the themes were really related to looking at town-owned land for affordable housing. I think Mary was very active in the map on that one and gave some good ideas there. Improving Route 28, again, with the aesthetics and infrastructure and pedestrian safety and mixed use, and then also improving Route 6A improvements, a lot of it having to do with parking and pedestrian safety improvements. I think that's a lot of it related to the village center. And then they also went through the raw data of the crowdsourcing information and kind of showed what people were liking and disliking, and there was a lot of support for things like the Station Avenue traffic corridor study that was done and trying to do something about that, pushing for improvements at Exit 75 or old Exit 8, I know that Will was concerned about that as well. And then also looking, I think that light was talking about Sea Si, Sea View Ave and Route 28. And then, again, the plains and the neighborhoods, looking at how great Taylor Brae Farm is, lots of likes on that, lots of likes on the business corridor improvements on 6A, looking at the Route 6 bridge replacement, making sure that we're replacing that to improve water quality but not flooding people out, there was a lot of support for that. The elevated boardwalk at the Riverwalk got, got some, somebody said, "I already got my engraved boardwalk plank," so.
Was it me?
It wasn't you. And then again, again, creating.
Still working the website.
Creating a long-term vision for Mattaquis, so that was, it was good. I think one of the things that we really need to do is I had, I had a brief discussion with Lori Sullivan, the communications director, and we're going to work up some Facebook and social media, social media posts, and then I'm going to highlight to everybody, "Look, we just have a post on social media, can you share that with yours and send it to you and as many people," and just try and see if we can't share that on social media as much as possible and get more people going to the, to the mapping and providing online comments, and maybe even signing up for the notify, because that's an easy way to get a direct nose, either through a text or, or email. And so I guess the next thing had to do with capital budget committee, they did a great job of providing a summary for some of the, the questions that we asked for their interview questions, looking at capital improvement projects, not surprisingly wastewater as being a long-term capital improvement project, but also not losing sight of our municipal building facilities like the fire station library and ME Small School, and then also shoreline protection and restoration are their key projects. Looking at things that could also be added to the capital improvement projects was just developing a full comprehensive plan for rolling stock or vehicle plans, so when, when do these need to be replaced and kind of planning that out and spreading it out over 10-year period? What external forces would, should they be considering related to capital expenditures or significant investment? He noted that a lot of these things that were mentioned, like PFAS are environmental, and the cost of those are really related to what the legislation is, what are the regulations that are restricting things. PFAS were something that we never used to test for, and then we tested it for it at this limit and we were okay, and then they lowered it, and now we're testing at this limit and we're, we have problems and we're doing our treatment. So staying ahead of that curve is going to be a little bit difficult because you don't really know that ball's moving all over the place with regard to regulations and legislation. And it indicated that holds true for sea level rise and shoreline protection, where you're really trying to balance the infrastructure protection but also the environmental protections related to that. Fourth item was, are there any action objectives or strategies you think the town should consider supporting the general goals? And really was just having that detailed checklist or implementation plan and then having performance standards to kind of keep track of, are you being successful in these things that you've identified? How can we address our maintenance needs in a cost-effective manner? And I think the key is scheduling maintenance when you need it so it doesn't become a giant capital improvement project later for a replacement project. I think a lot of different departments, including the schools, are kind of working on that type of thing right now. What is the development, vision for your redevelopment of the Mattaquis Middle School property? And how can it be used as an economic driver? I think one of the things capital budget is, they really wanted to see some type of cost-benefit analysis to see that if the community is going to be making a, a big investment, is there a positive return on that particular investment? Because I think people have a lot of different ideas, but is that the, is that really something that is sustainable or financially viable long-term? And if it's something that the town is considering for economic development, let's also look for some outside funding sources for all of this as well. Some suggested action items over the next five to 10 years on any of the goals were, you know, just kind of keeping with a consistent attention and capital and financial planning for our multi-phased wastewater plan and doing the same thing with regard to the municipal buildings and shoreline protection. The three main takeaways were, the first one is, like, when we do a lot of capital improvement, we don't really hear it get evaluations of the progress. Sometimes people will get money in capital, it'll languish for a little while, they won't get to that project, they want to have a better idea of what, you got this money, what are you doing with it, and where does it stand, and how are you progressing on that particular project? Which is good, it keeps everyone accountable for, for the, for the money that's done. And I think they were also looking at having individual departments garnering public support before coming to the capital budget committee for all of these different types of infrastructure improvement projects. And then also, the last one, I think, is really looking maybe at a little bit of the public-private partnership with regard to investment. If you have a developer coming in, maybe they put some money into a public project that improves and makes their development project possible. So a little bit like an impact fee, but a little bit more hopefully friendly, working together to get those done. And they also notified, noticed of looking for grants before coming to the capital budget committee. My only comment on that is, a lot of these grants require some type of matching fund, and you got to find those matching funds somewhere and have them before you can apply. So it might be a chicken and egg thing, you might need to get a little bit of capital and see what you can then find. The problem with a lot of these grants is they have very strict timeframes. You apply in July of one year, but you can't start spending the money till July of the next year, and you have to be done by June of the following year. So trying to, to stack a bunch of grants that, that all of the, the timing works so the same, I find, this is my problem with the Riverwalk Park, I'm sorry, the Parker's River Boardwalk Park, it's just that, it's just trying to stack, everybody has very different timelines on when things can be done. And then the last thing, we had a great meeting, I thought, with the superintendent, Mark Smith and Tomas Tolentino, the school committee chair, and then, and Will and Joanne. We talked about their demographics, and they are seeing an increase in their enrollment. They have like 1,000 students each in the intermediate and the high schools, and about 728 students in the elementary school, and that's gone up since the 2020, which was the recent low. And they do have space limitations in Station Avenue, so a lot of things are happening at ME Small, including special education and pre-K. We do have school choice, where we are at a ratio of four to one, meaning four going out to one coming in, and they were working to decrease the out-of-school district choice for students. And then, and if there's any type of feasibility study that gets done as far as the elementary schools, then they would have to do a more detailed demographic study at that time. But we do have a large number of high-needs students in our district. They're working on a 2024 to 2029 strategic plan, they have some draft strategic objectives, initiatives, and some outcomes that they're looking at. Obviously, the number one outcome was improving in school performance, we always want that to be done, graduation rates, developing that five-to-10-year infrastructure and capital improvement plan, reducing the out-of-district placements, and then decreasing in absences. ME Small, I think, is the big thing coming up. They did, both the town and the school committee did put support into the MSBA, the school building authority. Yeah, I always want to say association for some reason, that they would be willing to look at consolidation. There's some concerns about where that consolidation would happen and the traffic issues on Station Avenue. So there's still a lot that would need to go into that, and we'd also need to provide, the town would need to provide the funding for that feasibility study. Lots of things are happening in communications at the school, they're hiring a full-time communication director, which I was really glad to hear, to kind of improve their public relations and communications, and of course, would be coordinating with our communications director as well. They also have the different programs for translating documents, and that's helpful if we want to disseminate some information that way. There's also a superintendent message that goes out monthly or bimonthly, and they have like a little section at the end about community information, so we could add some, some additional information that could go out to the schools that way. They're also willing to accept flyers for putting in, in backpacks, so that might be They're also willing to accept flyers for putting in, in backpacks. So that might be another thing we can work on. The superintendent was really outspoken about wanting full transparency and he's really looking for invitations to come and speak to different groups. So I thought we were, were maybe putting a burden on him and he was like, no, this is exactly what I'm looking for. So it was, it was really good. The school budget coordination, we've heard a lot about that and I think they're really making progress on that. They've already met with the town administrators and the finance directors in both communities. And they're working on arranging a meeting with the chairs of the select board, finance committee and school committee and staff in each community sometime in, by November. They feel pretty good about their expenses because all their contracts have been settled and they're making some reasonable estimates on state reimbursements based on the, the trends that they have going on. The Student Opportunity Act, that was something that happened in FY '23 to remedy inequities and opportunities and achievements in public schools. And we've kind of been getting a gradually increase in that amount. But they're kind of, we're assuming a level funding, so we're trying to be conservative with that and saying that we're going to get the same amount we got last year of $875,000. So that's good. The main concern with staffing is housing, not surprising. But as far as getting staff, I guess DY and other schools had some layoffs, so there's more teachers seeking employment. So they were able to hire a speech pathologist position that had been vacant for a little while. The school's interested in adding an administrator for English language learners and first language not English programming. It's currently a coordinator, but no principal level administrator. And we do have a lot of students who, who fall into that programming. We did talk about the community-based learning that they have there and they do have a great careers program starting in eighth grade. They start with experiences like going to career fairs, Cape Aviation Visit Blue, Big Blue Conference. And then they progress to things like internships and there's one at the local vet's office, the police and fire and landscaping firm. So that is good to hear that they're already doing kind of that in the community internships. So the real takeaways that they wanted to present to us is, you know, in the past, the school's really operated as separate entity and they want to build that relationship between Yarmouth Dennis and the school so we can all work together collaboratively as partners in decision-making. And that just a viable, healthy school district benefits the entire community. So. It was great. We got a lot of great information here. I am working on scheduling some more staff interviews. I talked briefly with a couple of staff members about reaching out to them and they were certainly open to, to doing so. Finding out more about what they're doing at Senior Center, in the health department, areas that I'm unfamiliar with.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to say I was glad to be there. I think it's a real breath, I'm going to say it out loud. It's a breath of fresh air, Dr. Smith, in his push for transparency. And also want to give credit to the finance chair, Richard Simon, for pushing for these kinds of budget conversations to start happening now in the month of September and not in February, March where they come down from the mountain with the tablets and say, oh, this is what the state said. Sorry, everybody, here's your override. No, that's not how it's getting done anymore. And that's a credit to not just Mr. Simon, but also Dr. Smith. Last thing I would say is, I didn't know the exact number, but I did learn that the school district employs 630 humans. That must be one of the largest employers in our town, if not second large. I don't know who else would qualify.
The town itself.
Right. How many employees work for the town of Yarmouth?
Not that many.
Right. So it's just a, another, just a reminder of what the impact is in terms of not just employers and employees, but also where do these employees live? And what towns do they choose to live in? And how can they afford to continue to live there? Which are all the big issues that are facing not just this board, but many others. Thank you.
I, I would agree. It was a, it was a, it was a very, very good meeting. I attended for most of it. Dr. Smith is very impressive and clearly is open to all sorts of options to include the, the school district in our local comprehensive plan, which is really important. I, I mean, I've done some brief reviews of local comprehensive plans that the Cape Cod Commission has already approved, such as Sandwich. Sandwich had two paragraphs on the school. One about capital improvements and one about the wing school that's been transformed. It's kind of our Matices, I guess. Very limited, very limited. And, and that's a school district that's not regional.
Yeah.
So I think our plan is, and, and again, our, our plan has learn in the, in our vision statement, which other local comprehensive plans don't. I mean, they have limited, school committee is over here. School budget is over here. I think based on the conversations we had with Dr. Smith and I think, and, and the school committee chair, Mr. Tolentino, they, they want to be more engaged in what the future planning for the schools are going to be and the way that the town can collaborate with them. So it was, it was a good meeting. Yeah.
Madam Chair, just a couple of quick comments and questions. If we can go back to the, first to the crowdsourced data, do we know what the demographics, I mean, I noticed, you know, the demographics of our event at the Senior Center seemed to be appropriate for the name of, of where it was because the majority of people that came, I'm not suggesting everybody, but the majority of people seem to be of the senior age. So I'm wondering how we're doing with reaching out to the, the younger population, the, the, the school-aged children's parents, what are that?
Well, it's, it's interesting you mention that.
Forty's?
Because at the meeting with Dr. Smith, he opened up the door for us to provide direct information to his, essentially his email blast list. I'm, I'm using that generically. And, and offered to Kathy any platform that she might have for flyers on the local comprehensive plan. So he has offered to open that door to us to reach the parents of, of, of all the, you know, the.
I quizzed him pretty heavily on that with regard to, and that's why I was talking, the communications section. And I think once they hire a communication director, oh, how nice that would be. You know, if Lori and their communication director can go back and forth and, and really provide that, that interconnection. But we can certainly move forward with that. But definitely, because I don't think that we're tapping into everybody in town.
Yeah. And that's, I mean, if you look at how the town operates, there's the demographic of school-aged children and then there's the demographic of people been there, done that. And their mindsets and, and, and goals and ambitions are completely different. But most importantly, for something like this, it's, I think it's critical to tap into that, that school-aged children, family demographic because they quite, you know, hate to say, you know, they are the future of this community. They're the ones who are going to, you know, inherit what we put together. So I think it'd be important to try to find a way to tap into that. And it's good to hear that the superintendent is willing to do that. The other thing I wanted to point out, if I can, when I looked at this student population makeup, my, oh my, has our community changed. 26% of the population in our school system is defined as FLNE. And that's first language not English. And that's increased from 12% in 2013. It was probably
More than doubled.
Lately more than doubled.
14%, yeah, yeah. It's more than doubled in 10 years and really dramatically gone up since, you know, 2021. From, in the last, you know, four years, it's gone up 6%. So when you look at that, and then the other staggering statistic, which I've, I've heard quite often banty about, but quite a, a, a strong impact in, in our community is the top line, which is the economically disadvantaged. 55% of the kids in our school system are economically disadvantaged. I don't know how they grade that, but however they grade it, it's, it's pretty shocking to me that 55% of our popular, our school is economically disadvantaged. So those are like, just some quick comments on, on the information. I appreciate the time you've all spent with, with both the committees and I think the work that's being done is, is pretty good so far.
Kathy, I know you have to leave, so, and I will continue taking any nominal notes, but I think we're, we're pretty much done on this, right?
Yeah. Did you want to vote the minutes?
Yeah, let's vote the minutes. May I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes from October 2nd, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
One discussion point, Mr., Mr., one, there's, there's one. No, no, no. Peter, Peter Slovac's name didn't have a V in it at one of the.
Oh.
It does here.
Because he wasn't here.
I know, but it was about the fact that he had written.
Tried to volunteer him for a committee?
Yeah. Yeah, we did try to volunteer him for a committee. That was the piece.
There it is. It's under a little F on page two of the, of the minutes in the very last sentence.
Peter.
It's a typo.
Yeah, under deliberations, Kathy. Yeah. So I'd like to amend it to have it be Peter Slovac.
Nope, not happening.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Would you like a friendly RAC update, Madam Chair, or should we wait until Kathy leaves?
Yeah. We'll let her, we'll let her.
I'm not going to pick up. I'll just come back later. I just have to go to finance committee.
We won't be here.
I'll come back and get it all later.
All right.
Thank you.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, thanks.
Those are two important things. Any committee updates?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The RAC committee, the RAC met on Monday, the 7th. And I have good news. Our friends at Mass DOT, believe it or not, have at least for the initial part of the winter, defined as after November 15th, are allowing work on Route 28. Because as we know from advanced common sense, it is not winter on November 15th. But the good news is, at least temporarily, I believe Jeff Colby and his team will have to continue to revisit that as the months go on. But the good news is the work won't have to stop on November 15th on Route 28, which initially it was going to have to do. So they were able to get a temporary waiver and that's a wonderful thing. Kudos to Mr. Colby. The second thing is, as opposed to scheduling a big public engagement meeting, which is not what the committee decided to do, they're going to actually change our agendas every month so that there is actual more allowance for the public to participate on a monthly basis and to try to promote the fact that our meetings do exist on the first Monday of every month at 4:00 PM at the DPW conference room. And hopefully either virtually or in present, or in, or in person, we'll start to get more members of the public to participate. There will be some milestones that should be achieved in, in early 2025. So for instance, there was a groundbreaking down on South Shore Drive, right? Yeah. And hopefully in February, there'll be some way to sort of put a bow on some of the contracts, at least for now. And that might be another opportunity to do some more public engagement. But as far as what I had mentioned in previous months, minutes, those meetings are not going to happen before 2025. But, you know, the contracts administratively just need to continue to unfold. And believe it or not, there should be some, perhaps a groundbreaking for the actual water resource, the water recovery facility in early 2025. So I think that would be another big milestone for a lot of folks. And the good news is we don't have to borrow all 207 million. We get to borrow to like 205. So that's a good news for the town taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Sabin.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I appreciate it.
Madam Chair, could, could I ask a question of our colleague? I've, I've heard a lot of discussion about the cranberry bog next to what I would refer to as the old Barefoot Trader property.
Can you clarify that for those that may not know what that means?
Route 28 across from Standish Way.
Yes.
Next to the old Acme Laundry, which is now.
There is going to be a pump.
Really telling my age.
There is going to be a pump station there.
And I understand there's some pushback. Are we taking that through eminent domain?
I, I don't know the exact details, but I can tell you that Mr. Colby has direct conversations and agreements with the owner of, with, or the owner of the bog. So it's not being, it's not being, my understanding, I think it's not being forced. They're not being forced to do it. That's not my understanding for the meeting I attended.
I don't believe it's bog property. I think it's the, the outlet property.
Oh. Well, it was brought up briefly at our RAC meeting and Mr. Colby was.
Unless the bog is an issue of some sort. I'm sorry.
Well, no, it's, it's okay. It, it was, we were not led to believe that it is an issue.
So apparently there is.
True, but that is what we were led to believe.
There is an issue whether, whether it be the bog itself or the use of the bog, or whether it ties into the sewer system or not. I just know that there's rumblings about on social media regarding this piece of property and, and the town wanting to take something in eminent domain.
Yeah. That, the eminent domain phrase did not come up in the meeting, but it seemed like, and I'd have to go back and watch the meeting to remember exactly what was said. It seemed like the town was, A, not doing something that would be terribly detrimental to the property and B, that anybody who wanted to could have a conversation with Mr. Colby about it. Which, as we know from rumblings on social media, sometimes the best policy is to actually talk to the people who are doing the work and not just throw some, you know what, you know where.
Was the bog identified as the site? I thought it was the parcel next to the bog that was, the, the jump on the Buncie site that no one's used for years. I thought.
I would have to defer to Mr. Colby because I don't honestly know.
I, that's what I thought was maybe peripherally on the bog, but the big site was that site that.
Maybe where I'm getting hung up is I think there's going to be a pump station at the bog or close to, or right adjacent to it.
Either the owner of the bog or something has posted that he, he feels threatened by the town.
Okay. Well, that is certainly not.
Doing something. I didn't know if it was something that you, you were committed.
Certainly not something that Mr. Colby would agree with. And hopefully they're continuing to have dialogue about it, but that's not the impression that our committee was given at our last meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Committee reports. Anyone else? CEDC, Peter, anything?
No, I, I mentioned that two of the members were not chosen for the Matices for Use Committee. And that was, we, we also, a clarification on the St. Patrick's Day parade will, will fall to the Selectment this year. We, we thought maybe they were, the $50,000 that was, you know, sort of appropriated toward, to the Selectment budget in some way.
Yep.
And I guess the, the Select Board now is going to be responsible for giving them the money or interviewing them. It won't be under CEDC.
Right, right, right.
So you mean the Select Board went against the recommendations of a board or committee?
They chose to take on the responsibility, I suppose, of the parade itself.
That hap, that town meeting, that reallocation, that allocation to the Selectment's budget.
That's what, okay.
Right, that's right. That was a thing.
Any, any tourism, you may have covered this before, but your, the tourism funds and the applications, is that progressing?
We started, yeah. We had the first one. Yarmouth Historic Society was in. We, we allocated some money to some projects there. Cemetery markings, some other things like that. And so it's starting.
Okay, great. At some point, when you get to the point where you've got it, you, the, the whole listing of what the committee has run through, it might be, it might be good. And I only ask that because they were calling, they're coming to your committee and they're coming to CPC, my committee that I'm on. Many of the projects are, historic ones are, are the same. And we're in the middle of reviewing them now as well. We had three today that came in. Again, the cemetery markers, the monument and the.
Monument, the markers and.
There's another one.
Some of the sign boards, some of the.
Oh, it's the signage.
Right.
Historic signage, yeah. Bob Kelly was in for us. So I think those three also went to, to you, you guys.
Last week.
Okay, great, great. So now I've covered my committee update.
That was very convenient.
Any other committee update?
Madam Chair, if I might. The Drive-In Site Utilization Committee, which may or may not still exist, I'm not sure. They haven't told us to go away yet. Would like to remind the public that planks are available for sale at the Boardwalk site. 24 characters. Go online to Tony Yarmouth's website, get your plank while you can.
Backslash, what was it? Planks. Planks. I think that was what we were, Kathy would want us to say that.
Let's see, let's just go through upcoming meetings. Again, Kathy did mention the correspondence that she shared with me with regard to the note she sent for clarification purposes to Selectment Forest regarding our zoning amendment for HMOD 2. And hopefully that will clarify any questions that he has. So October 22nd is not a meeting for us, but it is the meeting at which the Select Board votes on the warrant.
Right. And I misspoke at our last meeting because I hadn't watched all of the last Select Board meeting where I think they realized they couldn't wait till the 29th. When I sat here and made it sound like they weren't doing their job, which they are.
So the, the warrant is going to be, you know, kind of activated next Tuesday. The following Tuesday is when we will be presenting the zoning articles and Kathy's already worked up, you know, a, a perfunctory presentation for us.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. At the same night, we would hope that there would also be a discussion at the Select Board meeting about our placement potentially on the Matices Use Committee. Is that correct? I guess what I'm asking is, in the, in the interests of collegiality as well as progress, do you want us to attend such, such a meeting?
Members have attended the zoning article presentation in the past.
Now, we have two reasons perhaps.
Yeah. And, and I would, I would recommend that anyone who can attend, attends.
Madam Chair, if I might, I would strongly recommend that in light of the fact that we're sending them a letter with each of our signatures on it, that it would be highly beneficial for each of us to sit right in that little front row there while you give your presentation.
If in fact, we make it.
If we could all put it in our, in our agendas.
Are you saying it would be, it would behoove us? Sorry, Madam Chair.
If in fact, they include us on that agenda date.
Even if they don't, we're sitting there.
Well.
They got it.
There you go. I, I, I think that's a good suggestion, Mr. Sabin.
And do they meet at 5:30 or 6:00? I honestly don't know.
It'll be posted.
Okay, you're right, Madam Chair. I will, I will look for the posting. Sorry.
November 6th.
Yeah, but that's a different one.
November 6th is our meeting and the BSC group will be giving us an update on the LCP. For that meeting, just so you know, I've had a conversation with Kathy. I'd like for them to organize the framework. You know, what's the ta, I'm, I'm looking at it like, what's the table of contents? What's, what's the big, you know, order of things going to look like?
Sure.
Different LCPs have done it a different way. They organize it based on the Cape Cod Commission. Natural systems, built systems, community systems. Sorry, got a dry throat. Anyway, I'd just like to have them present to us what, what they are going to move forward with. Special Town Meeting is November 19th.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's at 6:00, correct?
Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Shot of vodka, huh?
No, no, please. Mr. Sabin.
Town water.
Town water. Good stuff.
And then our meeting is on the following day, the 20th. Not sure of what our agenda will look like for that. will look like for that.
I think Kathy had hinted a couple of meetings ago that that meeting may not be necessary, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I think she did. So with that, any other questions about the calendar coming up?
One other question for BSC would be just, and I know they have a really helpful, I guess it's a Gantt chart, that sort of shows where are we in time and space, you know, on this process?
They do.
And I think it would be super helpful for us to go, hey, it's November of 2024, this is where we are versus this is where we should be. It would, that would really help me, Madam Chair, and maybe that was similar to what you've already requested, so if it's redundant, I apologize.
No, that is a different request.
Okay, well, I think it would be really, super helpful to me, and maybe some other members.
They're very beneficial to, you know, keep an account of where they're at in moving projects along, hold some accountability, so...
I know Kathy does.
Working on something five years from now.
Yeah, no, we want to get, this is on, we don't want this on slow motion. So with that, may I have a moment, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.